Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 26, 2021, and this is the meeting of the Accusative Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good. Gentlemen, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. In attendance tonight at the Town Hall is Mr. Gaspar and myself, and Mr. Wona is remote, attending this meeting Zoom. Okay, first thing on the agenda, minutes that need to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. Tonight, we're going to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2020, regular session, and June 17th, 2020, regular session. Mr. Gaspar, do I have a motion to...
Motion to approve both sets of minutes as presented.
And I will...
Second.
I may have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Tonight, let me just get to my notes. We have meeting mail. First on the meeting mail is a letter of retirement from the Treasurer Collector, effective December 31st, 2021. And there are letter of residence... In their letter, Catherine Muller. This letter is to inform you of my decision to retire from my position as the Treasurer Collector for the Town of Accushnet, effective December 31st, 2021. While I have enjoyed working for the Town of Accushnet and the great group of employees within the town, I have made the decision to focus on my family at this time. I appreciate both the professional and personal growth opportunities that have been provided to me during my tenure. If I can be an assistance before or after my departure, please let me know. I would be happy to provide whatever assistance possible for a smooth transition to my successor. Kathy, thank you very much for your three years of service here at the town. And you've been informed that you will help us with the transition to a new online paying system?
Yes.
The iCloud?
Invoice Cloud.
Invoice Cloud. Very good.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Gaspar, any comments?
I'll just say that she'll be missed. Catherine Muller is a great treasure collector. She was a good employee. She, you know, kept her nose clean. She didn't get involved in all the Mickey Mouse stuff on day-to-day operations. And she came in every day dedicated to her job and her work. So I thank her for that commitment to the Town of Accushnet and the taxpayers of Accushnet, you know, upholding that position the way she did, and she'll be missed for sure.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer the same sentiments. I appreciate Catherine's work, especially leaning into the, you know, the invoice cloud and changing over that billing system. I think a lot of people might have tried to slow walk that, knowing that they may be looking to retire. So I appreciate her, you know, taking that on and seeing it to its completion and putting us in a position to make that decision. So that's greatly appreciated. And I know the residents, once we go to this, will be really pleased. So thank you, Catherine.
Very good. And I think second on that is, do we need a motion to post the description of this job?
Yeah. And so we have a, you know, a draft here. If there are any changes that you see that you'd like to make. This was basically the job description that we used when we hired Kathy. And we have an updated salary range in there, but otherwise, it's all pretty much the same information as we had the last time. I'd like to post it as soon as possible to give us as much time to find a hire and have some overlap.
Very good. Mr. Gaspar?
The only question I would have on Ms. Hebert is, it just says letters of interest to the Town of Accushnet Town Administrator, not Rogers, but then it has the Assistant's email.
Okay.
So I don't, I think this is kind of confidential stuff, and I don't know if we want it to be gone through. And I think it should just be reported to you and discussed with the board from that, from now, just up on.
Very, very good. Well, then, do I have a motion to post this job?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Next, on the meeting mail, we have a letter from the Planning Board to hold a joint meeting to appoint a member of the remaining term, or the remaining term. Letter states, "The Planning Board is reaching out to the Board of Selectmen to inform their office of the passing of Philip Mello on August 29th, 2021. Philip was a lifelong resident of Accushnet and a great member of the Planning Board. At the Planning Board's September 16th meeting, a moment of silence was held in respect for Philip Mello. Board members made note of the need to fill the vacant seat. In addition, a public statement was made at the meeting for anyone interested in filling the vacant seat to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen. In addition to notifying your office of Philip's passing, the Planning Board is requesting a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to make an appointment until the next election." At this time, I believe we received two letters concerning the...
Letters of interest?
Letters of interest for the vacancy of the Planning Board. So, and in no way, let me just say too, I'd like to give like condolences to the family of Philip Mello on his passing.
I think it's important, Mr. Chairman, on this appointment, I would hope that the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen, when we're doing this joint appointment, we appoint somebody with some knowledge of our town bylaws and that of the planning area or not, just anybody to the position of Planning Board. So we try to find a good fit for the Planning Board. Somebody with some knowledge in development, knowledge of our town bylaws would be, you know, the perfect situation. That's what you're always looking for, for that kind of a position.
So do I have a motion to, to hold a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Planning Board?
Do we want like a certain amount of time to, we to collect letters of interest, and then we can set a joint meeting after, you know...
It doesn't matter. To the next meeting is two weeks, 30 days out, is two meetings away. It depends on how packed up our next agenda is. You and Ms. Hebert, you'll go over that and notify, obviously, the Planning Board, do notice, so that we haven't them coming in our next meeting. But it doesn't matter, 15 days, 20, 30 days, whatever. Whatever you guys decide to look and have to look forward, look into the next agenda, show some idea of what's happening, right?
Perfect.
We got time for a joint. Should be 10 minutes. But hopefully, we'll get some...
A second then. Okay, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. So we'll arrange that time, if we want to put it out there, that we would still accept letters of interest for the Planning Board seat over the next two weeks, and then we can go from there.
Perfect.
Very good. All right. Let's move on to old business. Old business takes us to a discussion regarding the Fire Department Assessment Center. As you know, gentlemen, we've kind of come to the conclusion of holding one exam, examination slash assessment center for the position of the Fire Chief and the Fire Captain. Since Fire Chief Gallagher will be resigning, he writes in a letter that a 50-question written exam would be administered. Candidates would be able to select one of both positions to test for. In our case, the candidates have requested to test for both, the Captain's and the Chief's position. This allows for a valid list to draw from both jobs now and in the future. The cost of this assessment examination would be $8,889. They have $4,000 in the budget. So I guess the Chief is looking for us to decide if we want to proceed in this direction and appropriate the extra money.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. Ms. Gaspar?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The only thing I shared on email with Ms. Hebert on what my thoughts were after we had the last discussion with the Chief on this, and this is pretty much in line with everything that we've had, that previous discussion with the Chief on, but I did bring it to the Town Administrator's attention that when we merged Fire and EMS, I learned, because I was the one doing it for the Selectmen negotiating that contract, I learned very quickly that most calls to service, matter of fact, 80% of the calls to service are, roughly 80%, anyway, 76 to 80% of the calls to service EMS-related, and the other 20, 25% of Fire, in which case, over half of that from Fire were false alarms. So when we did the contract, we kind of leaned more on the paramedics EMS side. Love it when we were doing the wage scale and all of that. So I just, I brought it to Ms. Hebert's attention because I thought it's important to note that that was brought to my attention in that contract merger slash department merger, some interesting stats there. So I just, I would like to make sure that the Chief, there's an understanding between the Chief and Badge Quest, which would be the consultant, the Assessment Center company we'd be using, that if the written examination slash Assessment Center would be, you know, a little heavier leaning towards the paramedic EMS side versus the Fire side, knowing that most of our calls, majority of our calls are EMS-related. So I think that even though it's, you know, we're used to in the Town of Accushnet, call it a Fire Chief. Chief Gallagher's really been in that position now for, Mr. Wona would be able to tell you probably exactly 10, 12 years, I think he's been in that position. We merged it Fire EMS Director. I don't know if we did that in 2010, when I was first elected, but he's been in that position for a long time, and I think that that was an appropriate title for him, to make him that Fire EMS Director, because of the nature of the business that we're in now. It's not just a Fire Chief anymore. It's the EMS Director, and that's where I think a good amount of knowledge needs to be known. So I just, I would just ask that when we, when the Chief discusses with Badge Quest or the Town Administrator does it, it's brought to their intention that we want it to be, I would like to see it a little more weighted toward the question here, the written exam and the drills and all that stuff. You know, they said they were going to do simulation drills and stuff like that through this Assessment Center. I'd like to see it, you know, geared up with a lot of EMS, not just Fire-related issues. That's all.
And I did share that with the Chief, and he said, you know, when we work through the assessment questions, we'll make sure that they're aware of the weight for the EMS portion that, you know, it's more...
So I'm sure that the Chief, I just wanted to make sure, we didn't have that discussion with them last time we discussed this particular situation.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that my colleagues and everybody was aware of that discussion that we had in our last contract negotiation, because it was a very good one, actually, and the contract does lean that way.
Okay. Well, very good. Mr. Wona, any comments?
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Gaspar, for bringing that to our attention. I think that's a good catch. Thank you very much.
Okay, so the Chief writes in his letter here that the next step would be the development of a job posting for both positions with weights assigned to different qualifiers, written score, assessment score, education, and experience. So I guess, do we need to make a motion to appropriate the money, the additional money?
Yeah, that would be first. We'll appropriate the money. It would be another $4,889. And then I can work with the Chief on the job postings. We can bring that to your next agenda.
Okay, very good. So...
To the job postings, or is it just more of the nature of the Assessment Center slash examinations?
I think it's both. I think it's both. So, you know, you also have to...
We'll work on that together, then? Is that something that we'll all do as far as the waitings? The Board of Selectmen really need to vote the way the waitings are. So if we did the written exam, 50%, 30%, and 20, you know, experience in years of service, I think things of that nature, we'll get that breakdown, and we'll figure that, formulate that out. That would be great, but, you know, we're talking $4,800. In the original, just so everybody at home understands what we're all jabbering about on TV, sometimes we already know what's going on, but they don't know what's going on. Last year at Town Meeting, we appropriated $4,000 for an Assessment Center for a Captain. Because the Chief is retiring a bit earlier than what we were led to believe, we are going directly after a Fire Chief Assessment Center, because we'd never have enough time to do it. But we're also including the Captain's position that was originally, so it's a $4,800 increase, yes. But we already have the $4,000 that the Town Meeting vote is appropriated for the Captain's exam. So now we're doing a combined Assessment Center for both examinations, so that we'll have both of those positions theoretically be filled when we deem necessary.
Right. Gentlemen, that's spot on, Mr. Gaspar. So do I have a motion to transfer $4,889 for the Assessment, Badge Quest, Fire Chief, Captain Assessment Center?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Good explanation. Okay, on the new business. On the new business, we have a change of manager at the VFW here in Accushnet. And is that on Hope Street, or is that the one next door?
Cleveland.
Cleveland Street. Okay. Yeah, that's the Legion, that's on. So VFW change in manager. I reviewed all the paperwork, what's in order. Is there something else that should be presented, or is it, everything seems to be in place here?
Everything as far as I, my book is...
This one, I looked through it. I talked to ABBCC. They think it's time. They have to do the Cory check on the person once we send in the paperwork, and then it goes from there.
Okay, very good.
And that was my only question, Mr. Chairman, is I noticed there's a Cory request form here, and the only thing I didn't see was a sign off on it.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't do that. ABBCC does.
Okay, boss.
Okay, very good. So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the VFW change to Victoria Elpont.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Second on the new business?
Having a successful Cory form, request form.
Very good.
Just want to put that on the record.
Although certainly. Cares requests. Julie?
I left this on here just in case anything came up, but we have nothing, so...
All right. Very good then.
We have a number. I know we talk a lot about the number, and it was somewhere floating, I believe, last time, it was like 100 grand, but we didn't know what we were doing, because FEMA is now reimbursing 100%. No longer to 75%. So do we have any inclination?
We're gonna put in for the entire amount that we're eligible to get. We have, I mean, obviously, first, I'd like to get whatever new things that we wanted to order. But yeah, where FEMA has covered a lot, the number's still kind of floating, and essentially, at the end of the day, we have expenses that were purchased that weren't applied to cares. You know, I know the school had a lot as well, between this year and last year. So at the end of the day, I'm gonna apply for everything that we didn't apply for already that was spent. So if we had something new, I would want to try to get whatever we needed, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure we get all the money.
How long's this sitting there for, this money?
Everything has to be spent through the end of this month, and then reconciled through, if there's a date in December.
So the rest of October is deadline? So we could be, we could be leaving?
No, we won't. Well, that's what I'm saying. I do think that we have enough in other charges that weren't, that hadn't gone through cares already.
You think eligible for cares?
Yeah, that are eligible, that we'll go, we'll go and backcharge those and get the money, because at the end of the day, it's money that the town will get to reimburse itself, so I don't want to leave anything over there.
If anybody comes up with a need in the next, whatever amount of days we have left in the month...
It is. Yeah.
I'm comfortable with making a motion, if that scenario plays out, Mr. Chairman, I'm comfortable with making a motion to have you approve with the Town Administrator any expenditure that might come up in the next, what, eight days left, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I'll second that.
Mr. Wona, second it. So if anything comes up, if a department happens to come up instead of us trying to hurry up and do a meeting 40 hours, posting the motion is made for you to take that up with the Town Administrator and approve that expenditure for cares.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, next on the new business, we have some surplus property. Fire Department has 64 lengths, 64 fire hoses of 50-foot lengths, all different diameters, made of rubber cloth and what other material. Condition code is 03, which translates to 03. Used property which is still in fair condition and usable without repairs, however somewhat deteriorated with some parts or portions worn and which should be replaced. I guess these fire hoses are not in compliance anymore.
Correct.
Standards established by the Fire Department. So is notified both DPW and Gulf Coast staff of the availability of this hose. We would like to offer what remains to the general public. So...
And he's gonna leave it out in the parking lot.
Is that what he's gonna do?
I think that letter says something like that. I guess he'll stack it up out there. If at that point, whatever DPW or Gulf, the way I took it, is they don't want it, the Chief's willing to leave it out in the parking lot, and have residents come by for a certain amount of time before we actually just get rid of it, discard it. There'll be, you know, it's week or two, or whatever it may be, but if people are interested in some fire hose, old fire hose, that's not within the certification specs some municipalities require. You're more than welcome to come and get it at zero cost. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just grab it, so...
That is correct.
There you go. Some people do use it for gardening and things of the like.
Oh, yeah.
You'll just need a motion to declare it a surplus.
Motion to declare it surplus, as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Very good. Next, on the new business, we have ARPA consultant discussion. Julie, can I pass this to you, and you can lead us on?
Yeah, so I just wanted to have a general discussion. I had forwarded some information to you all. In regards to ARPA, the Town of Accushnet is looking at around $3 million. We've talked about this in the past. There are certain categories and types of work that you can use the money for, but it's very particular, and to be honest, it's a lot of work. We've already seen how much work the cares and the FEMA has taken on the Finance Department. And where this is a project, you know, we talked before that this would be something we would look to use for water infrastructure updates. It would involve DPW. It's most likely going to be a larger project. I want to make sure that it's done correctly. We only have a short amount of time. It seems like a lot to, you know, an average person, but 2024 being the deadline to, you know, spend the money is not that much when you're looking at a project, you know, where we've talked about again, water infrastructure. It takes a lot of time and money and planning. So I received some information from this consulting group, had a meeting with them. I really like them. When we were trying to get help to get all the care stuff sorted out, I reached out to many of the managers and the auditors and, you know, asked if there was a similar kind of consulting agency that anyone heard of that would help out. No one had heard of anything. So finding this group was, you know, great for me. I met them, I really liked them, and I don't know that there are any other groups out there that are doing this work. Because if there were, I would say, you know, we could kind of shop around a little bit. But I'd love for you guys, if you want to look at using a group like this, to have them come to a meeting where they could share a lot of what they're doing for other towns and what they could do for us. But I know that there's a lot of, again, great thoughts, you know, looking at this downtown area. They have experience with other downtown revitalizations, including infrastructure. And so I think it would be really helpful for, you know, us, where we have a lot of newer people. We have a new planner. We have newer people in the accounting office, to have other consultants who, their fees would be covered by ARPA, but they would really be able to tie everything together, make sure everything's done correctly, make sure we meet all the deadlines, because as is similar with cares, there are a lot of deadlines, there are a lot of prerequisites. We have to make sure there's public outreach and things like that that are completed. And it's, it's a great opportunity, but it comes with a lot of work, where we already have, you know, departments that are trying to keep up with the regular day-to-day. So I wanted to at least bring it up at a meeting, hear your thoughts on it. And again, if you're interested in having a group like this, come on. I can set them up for, you know, one of our future agendas to kind of give a presentation to the Select Board.
Mr. Gaspar?
I, she's spot on. I mean, I thought about this, and I was kind of like caught off guard. Where did this come from? What's happening? We don't know when this money is supposedly arriving. I mean, we talked about over a year ago, probably closer to two years now, the 700,000 that we had. Senator Matigny put in a transportation bond bill. We haven't heard or seen a dime of that money. I don't want to mislead anybody in TV land that, you know, oh, look, the town's getting $3 million bucks. Yes, we've had a conversation back when I was chairman on this. It was brief. We talked a lot about infrastructure and the things of the like. I did see something in the email where we talked about South Main Street possibly taking that over. I know in a meeting with you and Selectmen Wona, Mr. Wona brought it up, or I think it was when you were talking PJK discussions, and Mr. Wona brought it up. I know it's something that I looked into five or six years ago with the state, District Five, and there's a lot of expense to this road prior to this town. I think if we were gonna engage with District Five, as Mr. Wona was suggesting, it's a great idea, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done on the road. There's a lot of expense that before we, the town, and the townspeople would be willing to accept that as a town road. There's a lot of work there from District Five. You see it, you drag it up and down. The road's in disarray. The curb is one inch out of the ground, whether they sunk, whether there's that much asphalt on the road. There's supposed to be six inches in height sidewalks, things of the like. So I like the idea of incorporating the South Main Street, as Mr. Wona brought up at that last meeting. I think it's something that we should be at least looking at and exploring. So I commend Mr. Wona on those comments in our last meeting. And I think that, you know, if it's $3 million, we got a lot of water infrastructure in this area of town where this, you know, revitalization, some of the money could be used for it. But again, it's, this is stimulus money, that's infrastructure money, and that's where we really need to gear ourselves up. And I think that we need to have a serious conversation. Again, I thought we did last time when I was chairman in the budget talks, but with our water infrastructure. As Water and Sewer Commissioners, I can tell you right now, I showed up at a water main break that was hit by Riley over on Sausia Street just last week, and our guys went over there and had to repair the leak, and we were turning gate valves all around the neighborhoods, trying to find one that would actually work to shut the water off. And what that means is if there's one at the bottom of the road, top of the road, you should be able to go at any end of the road, hit that gate valve, and only shut that street down and do your emergency fix. That ain't the case. We're on Naiav, the next street over, and we're shutting down, instead of shutting down 10 or 15, 20 residents, we're shutting down 40, 50, 60 residents. Granted, it's during the day. There are a lot of people, seniors, in this area of town. It doesn't really matter what side of town we're in. I just think that's unacceptable, and we can't keep pushing our water infrastructure. As much as that conversation's gonna hurt, I think we need to be truthful with ourselves first, and then with the residents and the water users of this community on what that cost is gonna be and figure out a plan moving forward, because it's just, it's just, it's been far too long, and we really, if this is the money that we can get, I know there's a lot of side streets throughout here. Slocum Street would be part of this funding, and if it can complement anything on South Main Street, if we own the road at that point, or maybe we can get Selectmen Wona engaged with District Five, start having that conversation of shared responsibility, something like that. We could allocate some of this money, and I think it would all just complement itself. But this is where there's a lot of aging infrastructure, so if we can kind of, not saying it's the only place we're gonna be spending that money, but if we can concentrate it in this downtown village area where a lot of that old water infrastructure is, we can do paving on these old roads that are all decrepit, we owe it to the people, we should be taking this money and spending it as seriously as we could possibly spend it, like it's our own money and it's our own property, and allocating those funds as best as we can to fix the problems that we have, because that was just a complete nightmare that I went and witnessed last week, and it's, you know, the pipes are really, I mean, the pipe's this big, and in the end, it's that big. It's not a good, it's not a good story. So we're not the only ones with it, but we've seen the boiling water thing in Metropoies and Faven and things of that nature. The last thing we need is bacteria entering the water and water system, so, and then So I think this board has Water and Sewer Commissioners better start having some serious, serious dialogue over infrastructure.
Well, some of this money comes directly from the feds and then some comes through the county?
Yeah, so, so yeah, so I agree with what you're saying. The bond bill is something that we still have never seen. And I, I want to clarify that, yes, this money is ours to lose. We've, we are getting like 1.1 million directly and then another two-ish million from the county because the county got direct payments and every town got direct payments individually. So our county has decided to give out the money to all of the towns, but they are keeping their 10%. So that's why I say two-ish million. I think we were originally at 2.2. So I'm guessing if they take 10% off the top, we'll be closer to 2 million. But it is ours. We are definitely getting it. It's ours to lose. We already received of our direct payment of the 1.1, 500-something thousand dollars. We did receive that in June. We'll get the rest of that. They said within, you know, no, no less than 12 months later. So, you know, relatively next summer, we'll get the rest of that money. And then in terms of getting the money from the county, I think they're looking at more of, like what it cares is where we do the work and we apply to them and then they give it to us. So I agree with what you're saying. To clarify for the residents, it's not like the bond bill where, you know, we're supposed to get it, but we haven't seen it yet. So it's kind of like this faint thing. We are actually getting it. But if we're not able to use it, we'll lose it.
Correct.
And I, and I hate to kind of have this great opportunity. And, and it's a lot of money, but it's not in terms of a big project like this. So that was kind of the other piece is what is the realism of what we can accomplish with the 3 million to get the greatest impact for the people? You know, you bring up South Main Street. We've had some discussions with DOT on that. Whether we take it over or not, even applying for a permit, if we don't take it over, it can take at least a year. So any of these water pipes that connect to South Main, that we have to touch South Main, and if we don't take it over, we still have to wait a year to get the permit through DOT. So again, when we're looking at 2024, that gets shrunk really fast.
We're gonna cut that pipe six feet short of South Main Street and stop it with a brand-new pipe. That's how they'll do it.
Yeah, so I mean, again, and, and I agree. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. We've, we've made our capital stabilization account. I'd love to put more money into that this year with the rest of the money that we kind of had in excess from fiscal '21 where we, you know, planned the budget deficit and we didn't have it. But that's all money that, you know, again, it's a lot of money to us in terms of accomplishing this huge project. I don't know how far it'll go, but they will be able to help us get a real picture of priorities, what we have to do first, what a real timeline will look like. They'll be able to really facilitate our planner, our DPW, our finance team to make sure that we can, you know, kind of accomplish all of this stuff.
Yeah, I think it's great. Bring them in.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to bring them in, try to get a little on this.
Look them up a little bit online.
Yeah.
Check them out.
They are municipal employee, like they're, they're actual municipal employees who have done the work, have worked in the field. I think it's helpful because, you know, private sector, things are so different. We have different rules that you have to follow, especially on big projects like this. And again, I, I kind of mentioned before that they have specific experience working with, I think it's Framingham. They had a downtown revitalization project that was very similar to what I think we envisioned for our downtown. They had a train that went through the middle, so that's a little bit different. But otherwise, I mean, they, they have a lot of relevant experience and they are municipal, you know, employees.
They have some projects listed in there. I took a look at some of their projects and stuff.
Yeah.
They talked a lot, they have a lot of, on their webpage, they have a lot of experience in water infrastructure and things of the nature. So I, you know, I think it'd be a good thing to bring them in and talk to them and give them, you know, I know this mentions some of the South Main Street. Again, you shouldn't be spending money on something we don't have and we don't own. And we have other places, i.e., I know I keep saying Slocum Street, but Slocum Street and the sidewalks over there and things of the like. I think that's probably a million and a half right there. So I mean, if we can get that and then do some other work. If, if we have Selectman Warner contact District Five, or you guys already have, whatever dialogue we can have with him, kind of get a, maybe the planner to start working on some drawings and say, this is what we'd like it, we envisioned South Main Street to look like.
Yeah.
Along with Slocum Street incorporated in that and the loop and.
Very good, Mr. Warner? Yes, Mr. Warner?
I'm in, I'm in favor of bringing the consultant in. I think it's a great idea. There's nothing, there's no harm in listening to that. I was gonna save this for Selectmen's announcements, but I, maybe I can roll it into this.
Sure.
As you know, last week, we were notified that the town will be subject to redistricting with our state representative, Chris Hendricks. Well, you know, where we will be losing him. But now having two representatives with Representative Strauss and Representative Schmidt. Representative Strauss, as I understand the map, his, his proposed new district would be South Main Street. Why, why I think that actually could be helpful to us is Representative Strauss is the chair of the House Transportation Committee, where all money for road projects go through. And so, yes, I'll, I'll second any motion to bring the consultant, but I'd also like to offer a motion to ask Representative Hendricks to bring in Rep. Strauss and Rep. Schmidt, introduce them to us. We've always had a great working relationship with Representative Hendricks. Would hate to skip a beat. And have that meet and greet with Rep. Strauss and Rep. Schmidt. Bring to them the attention, bring to them, to their attention some of our potential road projects. Ask Representative Strauss for his help in getting that 700,000 transportation bond bill money released. So this could be a good opportunity for us. I think all of this is intertwined. So that was, I think the, the conversation is appropriate.
Very good, very good. So gentlemen, do I have a motion to, I guess we need a motion to invite Capital Strategic, is it Capital Strategic Solutions?
Yeah.
To come before the board?
So moved.
Will second that?
All in favor? Aye. And I'll forward a motion to, to contact Representative Hendricks and arrange a meeting with Board of Selectmen with Representative Strauss and Representative Schmidt. I have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Are we really losing? I've seen an email on the redistricting. Is he bye-bye?
Yeah, so Representative Hendricks, I talked to him over the weekend. He is being moved to Bedford, solely in the Bedford district. And the town of Akushnet is, will be now split in half. So you'll have, I believe, Precinct One, the South Main, whatever Precinct One is, will be representative, will be represented by Strauss, which would be like Fairhaven, Mattapoiset, Marion, Rochester. And then Precincts Two and Three will be represented by Representative Schmidt, which is Two, Three of Akushnet, Freetown, Lakeville.
Fall River.
I don't love that district, but if we can leverage it to our benefit, with maybe look at it with Two as better than One, I don't know. But I think those guys are pretty responsible and will be, you know, attentive to our needs.
Yeah, I, I agree. I happen, I happen to know Mr. Strauss. So he's been a great representative for the town of Faven. I've been to some fundraising events with him. Good guy, so, you know, it's kind of, I agree with Selectman Warner kind of splitting us up between two reps. That kind of, you know, can create a conflict sometimes. But I think if, you know, if both reps work in concept with us, understanding that they represent one municipality through the both of them, they'll work cohesively. As Mr. Warner said, to get us what we need, hopefully. We'll see how that works out, but hopefully.
All right, well, very good. Then Julie, if you gain touch with Jennifer over the Capital Strategic?
Yeah.
And we'll set something up either for the next meeting or the meeting after that?
Yeah.
Get her on the agenda and keep this rolling forward. Did you?
Online.
Ah, okay, very good.
You said I bet her online?
Oh, good.
She can talk back what I meant.
All right, so next on the agenda, Town Administrator's report.
I just wanted to remind everyone that we have our upcoming Winter Town meeting in January and we have a deadline for articles to be submitted to our office by November 4th. So if you have a request for an article for the town meeting, please make sure you send it into the Board of Selectmen's office by November 4th so it can be considered for the warrant.
A necessity.
A necessity, yes.
Not, not just the, hey, I'd like to have, right?
Well, you hope.
I, I would.
Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I would, yeah, gentlemen, I would keep it pretty narrow in scope in, you know, no funding that would impact taxation, maybe CPC only. You know, if there are any money articles, but policy, you know, I think a couple of meetings ago, we asked Open Page to draft for us a, a bylaw on SOA moratorium. You know, I think we'd like to, we, we asked to see that. And I think there's some other, some, some need to be looked at as well.
Yes, very good. So get them in, that's next Friday, I believe, November 4th.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Speaking, speaking of SOA.
Yes.
Some change in assessments.
Yes, I saw an email. I haven't read it.
Division of Local Services has it?
Yep.
You see that?
Yep.
I did, I haven't read it yet. I did see that. I came in yesterday.
It was on the website. I was on the website last night and I happened to skate through it and I kind of click buttons that you're unfamiliar with and you clicked on that. And I'm like, oh boy. Now, I think we ought to have Mr. Blake, seeing how he's a SOA guy, maybe he could give the board, or you, Ms. Hebert, the TA, an update on if, what that means for us. I've read through some of it. Don't really understand it all. And I think that's best question for Mr. Blake to answer. Tom Consul can answer that question on what does that change mean? Because we get a little bit of everything that's in that change going on. Talks about fuel cells, SOA.
Battery, batteries.
That's the fuel cell.
Okay.
Battery backup storage, so. A little concerning when I caught, the eyes caught my attention, started reading it up. And I was like, yeah, I'll do this some other time. But I think if Mr. Warner mentioned SOA, I figured I, you know, count it. I hope it's not what I think it is. But we'll see. That's why if we can just have Mr. Blake give us an opinion on the changes. It's on, it's on DLS, Ms. Hebert.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I got the email. I just haven't read through it yet.
Very good. Any other Selectmen announcements? Mr. Warner, Mr. Gaspar?
That's it. That's all I have.
Okay.
The only, the only thing I.
I had mentioned, because we had been given some packets from the Historical Commission. Ms. Pauline Texaro, maybe we could have her come in and give us an update on our historical properties and where we stand. And she's got some requests, it looks like, here from CPC that's been given to us. Selectman Warner's away, so he can get it when he gets back. But if we can have her in and give us an update on, you know, where we're at, where we're going. You know, she's been doing the Historical Commission for a long time for the town of Akushnet. We're blessed to have somebody who's so passionate about our historical properties. And, you know, I'd just like to get an inclination of where we are, what, what the, what the Historical Commission's needs are from us, the community, for the next decade. Where, where do we see this going?
Yep.
You know, we piecemeal a lot with our historical properties, but I, I'd like to have Pauline come in and give us an update. I think it could be a quick fifteen, twenty-minute update. We already have packets. We know what she wants from CPC. But if you can just touch base with her, give an update on a building so that she can bring our residents up to speed instead of it just being, you know, a topic right before town meeting and we go make appropriations and nobody understands what we're doing.
Well, I've seen some movement over at the friend's meeting house up in North Mass. No, not in North Mass, in Northern Akushnet, up by where.
You bet traveling too much.
Yes, up by where Mr. Warner and myself live, over by Quake Lane. They added some lighting, exterior lighting for the building at night and it looks very nice. So yes, to have her come in, get her on the agenda over the next couple of meetings and see what she has to say. Very good, very good. For information only, the following boards or commissions have vacancies. Please consider serving your community by submitting a letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. The Agricultural Commission has two alternate vacancies. The Beautification Committee has seven vacancies. The Community Preservation Committee has one housing authority vacancy. Cultural Council has thirteen vacancies and the Open Space Committee has one vacancy. Anyone interested, as I mentioned, send the letter of interest to the Board of Selectmen. Future business, Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, November 9th, 2020, at 4:00 PM.
2021.[1699.84]